Valerie, did you ask for it?
I'm gonna fix them.
We're waiting for seven. Good evening. Welcome to the September 5th, 2024 Meeting of Little Falls Planning Board. Please ride for the flag salute, which will be led by Council President Anthony Escobar.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, with due respect, which stands my nation under God, municipal liberties and justice for all.
Thank you. Valerie, please read note the statement of public notice.
Little Falls Township Planning Board Meeting of Thursday, September 5th, 2024 is called to order. Please take notice that adequate notice of this meeting was provided in accordance with NJSA 10:4-8 and NJSA 10:4-10 as follows. A notice of the meeting was promptly posted on the bulletin board at the municipal building located at 225 Main Street, Little Falls, New Jersey on January 4th, 2024. A copy of the notice was sent via email to the North Jersey Herald and News on same date. Additionally, a copy of the notice was filed in the office of the township clerk. Please note that this meeting is being taped. Therefore, we ask that you speak loud and clear into the microphones.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Barry?
Mr. Karaj?
Here.
Mr. Luke Damianno? Ms. Cataldo?
Here.
Mr. Seber?
Here.
Mr. Pocius? Mayor Damianno?
Here.
Councilman Escobar?
Here.
Dr. Apde?
Here.
Mr. Wade? Mr. Dolan?
Here.
Mr. Rema?
Here.
Mr. Brithio Doral?
Here.
Mr. Koblars?
Here.
Ms. Siobhan?
Here.
Mr. Kilpatrick?
Here.
Thank you very much. Council President Escobar, any comments from the council for us?
Chairman, no one came before the governing body at our last council meeting.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion for the approval of the minutes of August 1st, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Karaj?
Here.
Mr. Luke Damianno? Ms. Cataldo?
Yes.
Mr. Seber?
Yes.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Mr. Rema?
Yes.
Minutes are approved. Memorializing resolution, we have a resolution for GL Development LLC 8284, York-Pompton Turnpike. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
May I have a second? What's your second? Uh, please pull the vote, please pull the board.
Mr. Karaj?
Yes.
Ms. Cataldo?
Yes.
Mr. Seber?
Yes.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
And Mr. Rema?
Resolution is approved. Welcome everyone tonight. It's good to see little crowd. We have a presentation of a project that has been a year, little year plus in preparation. There's a lot of hard work that went into it. We're proud to uh, display for you tonight for the first time. This is the draft and maybe some adjustments. Um, so, our planner, San Siobhan, is here and she'll be making a presentation. You have the floor.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. Do you mind sharing the PowerPoint, please?
Chairman, may if I may, you make some preliminary comments before.
Sure.
So ju- just for the information of the public, uh, San is going to present an overview of the proposed master plan. This is not the public hearing on the master plan. That will come, I believe, at October 3rd.
Yes.
When, when we're ready for that, uh, there'll be nu- notice published in a newspaper and we will provide a notice as is required under the municipal land use law. So this is not the official public hearing. We're not going to be taking testimony under oath. This is just an informal presentation from our planner to the board. But there will be a, a public hearing, as I said, on October 3rd, and that'll be noticed appropriately in accordance with the municipal land use law.
Thank you so much. Um, so, um, so as the chairman said, that the draft master plan has been a year-long process with a lot of input, lot of uh, public uh, engagement and a lot of research from our end. Um, and of course, given the fact that we've been providing planning services to the township for, for many years, uh, we also have institutional knowledge. So before I begin, um, I would like to give a brief overview of what is a master plan. And as all of us, all of us here know, and it's more for the uh, benefit of people, uh, laypeople who don't understand the municipal land use process, um, a master plan is a guiding document for multidisciplinary planning throughout this, uh, throughout the state. And it by law, which is the municipal land use law, it must be updated every 10 years. Um, the last time a comprehensive master plan was prepared for the township of Little Falls was in 2002. But it has been reexamined in 2008, 2013, 2021, and last year in 2023, when I presented this before, uh, before you all in April, where it was determined that there was a need for a comprehensive master plan. Um, the elements prepared include the land use plan, which is mandatory. The, a land use plan and housing plan is necessary to prepare, uh, a, uh, prepare and adopt ordinances. Um, the other plans that were prepared were circulation, which ties in with land use, um, economic development, sustainability, um, open space element. Um, next slide, please. So as I mentioned, that, um, there was a, uh, it's a year-long process. We've been meeting, we have had regular meetings with the master plan subcommittee, which, um, consisted of our board chair, the mayor, council president. So we had representation from the planning board governing body. We had township staff with our prior administrator, current administrator, and James, uh, Di Maria, a construction official. And, uh, throughout the process, we also had legal representation with our, uh, with our board attorney, uh, providing advisory services. Um, we prepared a master plan website and a public survey to get, to reach to wide, uh, in wide area, uh, residents and business owners. So, and then we did three community workshops. The first workshop was to get familiarized people with the master planning process, get their input. Then we had a second, that was, I think, almost a year ago, in end of September. The second workshop was to get everyone's, uh, to hone in more, to define the goals and objectives and recommendations. And then the third workshop was eight months ago, end of, uh, just, uh, just before the holidays, um, where we, uh, put forth preliminary goals and, uh, objectives as well as recommendations by public input on that. Um, we also from our end conducted township department heads and some council interviews. And the next two steps now is first the draft plan review with you, the planning board, and of course, the public meeting, members of public and, uh, uh, comment as well. And then a draft plan review session with the governing body on Monday. And then finally, a public hearing as our attorney, uh, mentioned. So, uh, just to remind everyone that by, as per ML, it's, it's a planning board document and you have the jurisdiction. Um, I will quickly go through the community engagement and public participation. We, as I mentioned, we conducted an online survey and these are, I don't know if it's very clear to all, but just that, uh, the overarching theme based on the 400 people who responded, um, was that residency to future extreme weather was important, quality of public education was important, um, understanding traffic and congestion was important, um, condition, improving the conditions of parks and ventilation facilities was important. And then finally, um, the downtown was very important in terms of attracting businesses or revitalizing. So, uh, next slide, please. So as I mentioned earlier, there were 420 participants. Um, so out of, that's about three, little over 3% of the population. And out of, out of that, 93% were residents, um, 3% owned a business. And, uh, the remaining four just categorized themselves in the others category. Now, when we also wanted to find out what attracts people to Little Falls and, uh, most, uh, next slide, please. So it more, the 38% said they found a home they liked, they lived in the town, uh, for over 20-plus years. They were close to family and friends. They liked the character of the community, the quality of life. Um, so that, that, that's it. And in the actual master plan, the community survey and summary report is provided. Um, so feel free to read that if you're interested. But we incorporated all of that information as we were drafting the master plan. Well, next slide, please. One, one of the most important things in any master planning process is the demographic. You need to see how the population has evolved over the years because all of that ties into your land uses, ties into the needs of the community, so on and so forth. And, um, uh, given the fact that we have a university within our, uh, within our boundaries, we, we studied the, uh, significant changes in the population and typical, all as reflected all over the country. There was that surge, uh, post-Second World War. It tapered down and then again started, uh, growing, uh, from 2000, as you can see in these two slides, and also it's all in the document. And what was interestingly included that slide was that, um, you know, you want to study how many people, what's their age group, what's the cohort? And you see that there's a sudden dip, um, and that was during the pand- pandemic, which kind of, you, you know, clarified some of the doubts we had about who all live in, uh, Little Falls. Next slide, please. So, you know, you look at this, um, the, this, uh, the rock to the left, it's a reverse pyramid, right? So it's an aging population and, but it's funny, the pie chart next to it, and it's all there in the plan. It says 27%, which is the highest percentage individually of the different generations belong to Gen Z, which now then goes back to the fact that, you know, you have a university campus on, on your, um, in your township. Um, but truly, as reflected in, in, in the reverse pyramid, um, majority of people are Gen Xs. So it's 44 under 59, baby boomers, um, and there's a small percentage of people that are, um, over 80. So, um, so, next slide, please. So based on all that information, we reviewed prior planning documents, we reviewed regional documents, um, and, um, also we started with a rough draft goals, uh, land use and other elements, goals and objectives, discussed it with the subcommittee extensively, discussed it at our public, uh, meetings. And we really have, um, six major goals and there are objectives under that. It's all there in the plan. I didn't want you to go through, um, it. But it's more of a common sense, which, you know, you would look at it when you observe what's happening in your town. And then you look at the data and, um, a, a lot of demographic data and it just, it's, it all ties in and makes sense. So basically, you have a single-family residential neighborhood. So we, the goal is to continue to maintain, preserve, and enhance the ex- existing established residential character of the neighborhoods. But at the same time, there is a need to have ratables because predominantly it is a residential community. So create an attractive built environment that encourages positive rateable, enhances the quality of the township. Um, and then you're also fortunate to have a bus route, you have, uh, a train station. So building upon this existing efforts, uh, to promote transit or in development that has been happening for the past, I think, 12 years or more. And to continue on that, um, there are opportunities, um, as you can, as you know, and the board knows this, um, to expand opportunities for mixed-use development along business, um, corridors to get rid of any Marvin, uh, buildings, uh, or what have you. And another thing that, you know, to ensure that the zoning districts regulations and land use continue to align with the development, uh, goals. And then, uh, to promote measures to allow the town, uh, township to be resilient. So we have that challenge, the PECM and PECM, to continue to build upon the efforts that the town has been taking. Next slide, please. So, you know, I, I hate the word issues. Um, it's so negative, but I don't mean it in that way. I mean, these are the existing conditions and let's talk about them. So the Newark Fountain corridor, given, you know, that's revitalizing that corridor is essential. Um, there are certain sites, and this was also, um, expressed through the survey at the community engagement, that redevelopment to promote economic development, downtown revitalization, that's important. One of the, um, opinions expressed was downtown area, there are relatively limited types of commercial uses. Then, um, oh, you know, we had this, yeah, development that we, um, heard just last month. Um, and it, it's important to eliminate zoning boundaries to better reflect the existing uses and the split zoning that we've had, um, the, the last month, that we've had others in the past. And then most importantly, protecting flood hazard areas and, um, along the PECM and the PECM, so identifying that. Uh, next slide, please. So the town is predominantly residential. NJDP data is not accurate, but I'm quoting it because that's the only secondary data available to us. But 54% of the developed acreage is residential, but as for our parcel data, it's 72.4%. And then some of our recommendations, again, based on our experience here, was about rezoning some residential developments that were in the B1 or I zone that would be better suited for a residential zone, to amending zoning boundaries to follow property lines and eliminate split zone laws. Next slide, please. So this was again, um, you know, it doesn't represent the entire township, obviously. It was the 400 people, but nevertheless, that's the data we had. And, um, you know, they expressed their opinions about, um, 83% spoke about single-family. Some said, 43% said senior housing. There was interest in 57%. Uh, but one thing I would like to also point out, and I've written that in the master plan, any of the mother family development in, in Little Falls has been a part of the opponent housing mandates that were pressed upon every town through the state. So, um, but, so that's something to always, uh, keep, keep in the back of your mind. Um, next slide, please. With commercial and business, we have only 16% of acreage as for the, uh, DPD, uh, which is inaccurate in that Montclair State, which is a public, uh, which is classified as a public, uh, institution. They classify that as commercial. So that's why, you know, we try to rectify that. Um, commercial business to continue, uh, uh, to be for any townships or municipalities economic help. It's essential to have a thriving commercial district that provides the ratables. Um, so we've, uh, recommended, and I've summarized it here. It's all in great detail in the master plan about review and revise code to allow for popular and modern uses, to, they're zoning code to allow for uses that are not found. Like, for example, we still have telephone exchange as one of the permitting practices. So it's important to, uh, your, for your ordinance to reflect the current times and this master plan provides that framework. And then the other thing was to reviews and review and revise code to revitalize commercial toilets along Main Street and Newark Fountain Turnpike. Next slide, please. Um, since 20, uh, since February 9th, 2021, uh, the governor has mandated that every master plan's land use element discusses the climate change vulnerability assessment. And, um, we, we did fit just that. And, um, we relied heavily upon the 2020 PEC county hazard mitigation plan. And specifically, there are, the municipal land use law has specific requirements which we followed. And the main vulnerability issues and recommendations, um, which I just want to highlight here for us this evening is to continue to work with the same county and neighboring municipalities to stabilize the road beds along the PECM, um, to continue upgrading water distribution piping system, work on mitigation measures to limit the chance of flood damage, to Little Falls Recreation Center and W facility, ensure that critical facilities have backup generators and, um, develop every man of that. Um, so finally, uh, there were 47, uh, next slide, please. Uh, finally, there were 47 recommendations and each of those recommendations were under different categories, general, land use, residential, uh, so on and so forth. And, um, what I tried to do, um, and then the last one was vulnerability assessment. And what I tried to do is, uh, just, um, hit upon the key land use recommendations. So one of it, which was, uh, to review existing land use patterns and compatibility with the zoning map and need zone boundary changes as required. Um, there was a recommendation, as I mentioned, to update zoning code to remove outdated uses and to create definitions for more off-the-later contemporary commercial uses, to amend and clarify sign regulations. We had numerous sign variance applications here. So that's, that, that's the need as well. To evaluate the potential to permit mixed-use development along Newark Fountain Turnpike. Um, you know, when, when any application, when, and we are, we are a combined board, when you have a plethora of, uh, used for application, it's really a time to reevaluate if the zoning is working or not. Um, amend bulk requirements and for institutions to support rural and economic development in the downtown area. Um, and then last but not the least, um, and everybody knows this, that in the state, uh, the inland flood zone, we have all these regulations, but we also have to, uh, in our own way, uh, when it's economic, economically feasible and cost-effective, consider mitig- uh, mitigating flood hazards and other natural hazards by implementing, uh, infrastructure projects. And of course, there are funding opportunities available that the town is doing and has been doing for all these years. Um, the next one is circulation goals. Um, in that, we have three main goals with a lot of, um, uh, objectives as well. And again, that's all very clearly written in, in the, uh, master plan. But one is to provide a safe and efficient transportation system, encourage mobility by all modes, enhance connections to key locations throughout the township. Circulation is important because it is very related to land use. Land use is triggered, parking requirement is triggered, traffic, and vice versa. So, um, uh, one thing that this master plan has, um, tried to achieve, and a lot of input from the subcommittee, was have one cohesive document so that it's not prepared in a silo and it's basically, you know, what's, what could be ideal for our town. Um, in terms of trans, next slide, please. In terms of transportation, we looked at the trends and issues. We examined how the town, uh, travels in terms of the different modes of transportation. We examined the gas circulation. We tried, we got, for example, flash data from the police department to analyze intersections and, um, you know, uh, that's the level of analysis we did. The other thing too is transportation also, since we're writing a sustainability plan, economic development plan, as well as, uh, open space, all of these are interconnected. For example, regional connections. Um, there are different initiatives, um, like, uh, for example, greenway plants that are, um, that are, um, their, Montclair has, Montclair Township has their own, um, own, um, sort of plans. So we tried to analyze all of that to, uh, come up with an idea for regional connection. Um, and finally, um, any, by, when you try to revitalize a town or make it very attractive, street skate guidelines are important. Um, and finally, we also, uh, had a parking specialist, DHA, who did a parking analysis for the downtown area. And, um, uh, next slide, please. So in terms of circulation issues, I, 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 I already described that, but one was, of course, it was an important, uh, issue, traffic congestion. It's important because not all those streets are owned by the, are within the jurisdiction of the municipality. We have local, we have county and state streets as well. But, you know, this was something that, um, acknowledging that was, uh, the answers we got. And then the other one was pedestrian and bicycle safety was something that people expressed and, uh, again, based on our research as well. So finally, we came up with these key circulation, uh, recommendations. And as I just mentioned, that not all the streets, um, are under the township's jurisdiction. So we're recommending, and the township is working, um, with the county and state, but to continue partnering on transportation measures that can mitigate congestion in and around the township. And then, um, we spoke about regional connections, having street skate guidelines. So, um, we are recommending including guidelines and redevelopment plans that can, uh, improve walking and biking and conditions between key areas, um, and township, uh, destination. Uh, we spoke about improving the rest and safety on Main Street through infrastructure improvements. Um, you know, we wrote this a few months ago and I've noticed that there, uh, there are projects that have been undertaken at this time. So, but nevertheless, it's a worthy recommendation to keep in the master plan, uh, to ensure that the township has adequate infrastructure for existing and projected growth in EBV purposes. This goes back to the statewide initiative started by our governor since 2019. And to implement safety enhancements in streetscape design, and again, going back to that point of pedestrian safety. And then finally, some recommendations regarding parking and parking management. Uh, next slide, please. So again, transportation is also connected to economic development. So all these initiatives are to make, continue to make the town economically vibrant. So, um, in that, we, uh, recognize again, multiple goals, three goals, multiple objectives. But one of which was to continue to enhance the downtown area and civic and economic part of the township, to continue to seek stable, high-quality ratables that also reflect favorably upon the image and identity of the township, and to create a mutually beneficial relationship between Little Falls and Montclair State. Because again, it's right in our town. Uh, some of the economic development issues is, of which was based on our research, based on the input we got, based on the interviews we conducted, was lack of commercial acreage compared to the residential use, which is what would balance out, um, a township's, um, you know, uh, uh, healthy, economically vibrant, uh, municipality. Underutilized properties in commercial corridors and traditional downtowns to create, uh, attractive downtowns that walkable amenities. And again, Little Falls has the framework, has the bones, is working in that direction. This just continues to recommend augmenting. So in terms of when we ask people, um, what Little Falls would use more of, um, variety of restaurants, um, a variety of retail stores, um, community gathering spaces, cultural facilities, public artwork. Because that goes back into what we, we will see in the master plan and talk about place making. But place making is a way of identifying and creating an identity for your downtown area. Uh, next slide, please. So with key economic developments, um, again, it goes back to creating, uh, developing a greater place-making strategy that highlights the unique character of Little Falls, um, to continue to review the regulations for Route 46 corridor to ensure that it meets the modern demands of the heavy commercial corridor. And again, um, one, you know, it's, it's good to continue monitoring macroeconomic trends, particularly as, um, trends and You know, it's it's good to continue monitoring macroeconomic trends, particularly as um trends and retail office spaces. Continue to change. Um and it's 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 interesting because I was reading about this law. From forty years ago where they actually did spoke everything against mixed-use development, but now that we are talking about mixed-use. Big island to revive also, you know, land use planning or any kind of master planning processes dynamic. Um encourage public improvements that are feasible. Um and uh. Also again, going back to what we had mentioned in the land use law, uh land use, sorry, land use plan about. Encouraging mixed-use commercial opportunities in appropriate areas of the township. Um and then another last but not the least to utilize pedestrian safety improvements along the mainstream. Which is again, an economic development tool because hopefully one can walk and utilize your downtown, which then adds more. Uh good traffic to your businesses. Um next slide please. You know, sustainability goal, this by itself is a a guiding document in terms of. Your ordinances are not relied, you don't rely upon sustainability uh plan to give you that. Uh feat for your uh uh ordinance, the framework, uh it's the land use plan, however, it's important in terms of. Um for the different initiatives to uh apply for funding, et cetera. So um there again, three goals. Of a multiple uh multiple objectives, but one of which is uh to implement policies. Um towards achieving local and state level climate change goal. Again, that's so important, not. All over the world, but especially so within New Jersey to improve the township's resiliency and sustainability. And to encourage the utilization of renewable energy resources. Um so in terms of sustainability, we spoke about, uh you know, described. And suggested looking for, uh there's a potential for reducing green. Gas emissions by promoting energy efficiency, alternative energy use, adoption of smart food. Growth principles and uh addressing um in in increasing frequency and intensity. Of flooding through, you know, better and greater stormwater management uh effort. Next slide please. So the key recommendations were again to consider opportunities to implement green stormwater infrastructure. And streets and capital improvement projects when cost effective, because we recognize the cost of it too. It's a recommendation, if it's cost effective, it's an ideal thing to look into. Um consider en- energy, uh further energy efficiency improvement at municipal facilities. They're already. Multiple initiatives been taken and this is just a recommending augmented that continuing that uh level. Um to identify opportunities to install additional EV charging stations. Um and then incentivizing the use of LED building practices for new development. Again, that's more about where when people to work with utility company to replace existing streetlights. And to upgrade the township's storm management plan. Uh next slide please. Finally, open space and recreation goals. Um in that we uh of course. Uh visited all your uh parks, um had a conversation with your recreation director. Um discussed internally with uh the township staff as well as uh the subcommittee and uh. Came up with these goals and objectives, which is to enhance existing park and open space properties. Creating connections to form uh between the different parks to form an open space network. That again goes back to the. Prior uh plans that I described about creating regional connections, et cetera, et cetera. So our goal was to have these um plans intertwined with each other and it's becomes one cohesive document. Um and then another last but not the least goal was to utilize strategic open space acquisition in environmentally sensitive areas. So that goes back to the sustainability goals, that goes back to the goals of um basically pre- preserving um land. And addressing the climate change vulnerability aspect. Um in terms of open space and recreation issues. Based on our conversations, um it's, you know, limited restrooms, parking spaces and lighting in some township parts. Improving walking, biking connections to existing township parks and open spaces, improving facilities. Uh to have AVA, accessibility, university design, et cetera. And then um you know, utilizing bio property in the Siniac area as potential future open space. Um so based on all of that, we, these are the key open space and recreation recommendations. So um we identified a few places where you can implement facility and open space improvements. Sometimes some of the parks are too too small to even think of having a restroom or a parking area. And they're more leavable pocket funds, but where feasible, the township is doing that, but we also identified. Uh potential um uh poten- potential sites. Um signage is very important, signage, we finding signage also goes back to the point I made about place maybe. Creating that uh connectivity. So um and also it's the pedestrian safety uh aspect as as well. And then um one of our recommendations was to explore potential options, but implementing the Siniac Open Space Enhancement Plan. We um had prepared, H O M had prepared that three, uh more than three years ago. Or uh or maybe last year, I don't remember, but we had discussed that, got an input from the members of the public, which is what um. Has um uh evolved into this recommendation. Um and then again, going back to working cooperatively with county and state agencies to implement. Plant mitigation measures. Uh finally, to be the red center um to uh. Make it EV compliant and then, as I mentioned earlier, upgrades to all the different park facilities. So finally, so what are the next steps? So as I mentioned, we're presenting this draft plan here. The next step would be to present the same plan to the governing body on September nine. And then we'll incorporate the board's comments, if any, governing bodies and public comments, if any. Into uh and have revisions to be made based upon the feedback conceived. And finally, if barring any major changes to the plan, um as uh our attorney mentioned, we intend to adopt. That which is next month. And this is it from me. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Very well done. Uh any comments or questions for the members of the planning board? I know this is not a public hearing, but I'm gonna ask for a motion to open up a meeting to the public in case anyone wants to comment. Or ask a question at this point. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those appays? Meeting is open to the public. Anyone want to come up and comment? Don't be shy. All right, no one coming forward. I close the meeting to the public. Thank you very much for that report, Sam. Um Mister Mayor, i- is this a master plan uh on our website for review?
It is, it has been. I think it's going to be uh re-updated again and all of the uh information. Is contained in a very short, I believe it's almost four hundred page document uh that anyone can review at their leisure.
Uh there's a lot in that document.
Hundred and sixty-four pages.
Of action and then the rest are appendices just providing our compounding that. This data is supported by all governments.
That is true, but some of those have a lot of information and it's a part of our plan. Again, thank you very much. That concludes the draft presentation uh of the master plan. Our first application is Big Shine Energy.
Chairman, the mayor and myself can't sit on this, so be excused. Thank you.
Yes, uh the remaining applications require use variances and members of the council and the mayor cannot sit in. Thank you. Mayor, do you have the keys to the lights or? James, do you have the key to turn off light? Does the microphone talk? Welcome.
Thank you for having us. Uh good evening, uh Mister Chairman, members of the board. My name's Raphael Corbalan. I'm from Chiesa, Chilean.
We can barely hear you.
Oh, do I have to push this? No. Can you hear me now? Better? Okay. Raphael Corbalan from Chiesa, Chilean and Gian Tomasi. On behalf of uh Big Shine Worldwide Incorporated, uh doing business as Big Shine Energy. And uh tonight we're presenting on a development over at fourteen hundred Route forty-six West, which is uh designated as Lot. One point oh one and block two oh one. Um the applicant tonight seeking a site plan and variance uh approval to install five solar panels. On a existing billboard on Route forty-six, on which will be used to uh provide power to the lights on the billboard. Um so just as a recap, I guess, of uh the town's code. Solar panels are conditionally permitted in all districts uh pursuant to section two eighty dash one four one point one. Um but in this case, we have to request the D three variants uh with respect to the location. Um because under section two eighty dash one four one point one B of the code, uh solar panels have to be on the rooftop of a building. Or uh ground mounted, and in this case, doesn't really apply to us. Um so we've submitted the uh affidavit of mailing and proof of publication and uh tonight we're gonna have two witnesses. Uh on behalf of the applicant, uh the applicant, um one is a solar panel uh expert um and a professional planner. Um so uh unless the board has any questions, uh I'd like to proceed with the first witness.
Council, can you just spell your last name for the?
Oh sure, uh Corbalan, C O R, D is in boy, A L A N.
And for the record, this chairman, I have uh had an opportunity to re- review the affidavit of mailing and the proofs uh that were submitted. By councils firm and they are compliant with the requirements of the municipal land use law, so the board has jurisdiction to proceed with the application.
Thank you. Um so if there aren't any questions, I'll proceed with the uh the first witness, who's uh Mister David Carrillo. Um he's a solar energy expert uh for on behalf of the applicant. If you just give us a minute, uh we're gonna put up a site plan on it, please.
That's fine. Probably over here. McNeil's may have to move.
Do you want it further over this way?
I would like it further over here.
Yeah, yeah, just oh closer to that door, so the members.
Yeah, put it by the door, then we can also.
You don't have to.
That's good.
We just want it oriented so the board can see it and the public can see it.
We also have copies um circulating. Someone wants to see it up close without getting up.
I have to turn it a little bit.
Uh you can turn it a little bit.
All right, turn turn it towards on. Thank you. Perfect. There you go. Now we got the technical aspects out of the way.
All right, so let's get started.
Let's swear in your witness.
Yes, please.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that your testimony that you're about to give before this board is gonna be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Okay, please tell us your name and spell your last name for the record.
Can you step up to the microphone?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is David Carrillo.
Can you spell your last name?
C A R R I L L O. And I'm a professional engineer. Um my title at Big Shine Energy is um design engineer. My educational background, I'm graduated in NC State with a bachelor's in aerospace engineering. And a master's in proportional engineering. And I've been working in Big Shine for about four years now, since two thousand twenty. Uh as a solar engineer. Yeah, so I have the NAPCE certification, which is the standard for solar. Um. It's the NAPCE BB professional installation professional and also the PB inspector professional have both certifications under the NAPCE. So the certifications is the standard for solar industry, as you know, um. You you're probably well aware that the NAPCE has taken as the standard to be certified for them. To be compliant with it, many different things, including like. Uh not only applications with the township, but also applications with the utility as well as any incentives they require to be NAPCE certified. Yeah, they both current.
Are you licensed engineer?
No, I'm not. I'm not a PE signing here. I'm not professional engineer.
So you're signing as, I'm not sure if you said NAPA or NASA?
Is NAPCE certified and I'm just overseeing the documents. We have a professional engineering firm that will stamp these documents and haven't stamped these documents. I'm just overseeing it.
Okay, the engineer is not present tonight.
No, the the one who stamps here is not present at the moment.
Thank you. That's fine.
Yes, I'm familiar with the site and the proposal or project.
Is that microphone working? He's on his way.
Green light?
Oh, well done.
Alright, so you can take, you can take this microphone. So uh uh did you prepare uh or did you review the site plan with respect to the development um for the presentation today?
Yes, it has been reviewed.
Okay, so uh if you could just please just uh briefly uh just explain what the plans are that are on the easel for the board.
Okay, so the first page is pretty much overs- uh overshadows the entire scope of the project, including the. Project information sheets to come, as well as the location of the billboard and the area that we will be working on putting solars on. That's just general notes to follow for any G C doing the work.
And this is the site plan, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, um just quickly, uh does this the site plan that was dated uh August twenty, two thousand twenty-four? That there was revisions made to it?
Yeah, there is a revision made to it. I believe they wanted to add more distances to where the billboard is located to um. Describe the property area.
Yes, but otherwise, the the other than these minor changes, essentially the same plans, no significant changes have been made since uh. First plan was submitted with the application.
It's exactly the same as the first plan that was submitted, just with more distances added as requested.
I guess I'd just like to mark this as an exhibit.
I I was just gonna ask you, so the the board has not seen that version, correct?
Right, and uh you know, we'll we'll provide it uh, you know, as a part of the conditional approval, if we can get it, um this is something to review.
So let's mark that A one.
Okay.
Well, the set, the set will be A one. How many sheets in that set?
I believe it's four.
Twelve sheets, I believe.
Is it, I think it's fourteen, but I could be wrong.
Let me see the last sheet. Yeah, fourteen sheets, I'm sorry.
Okay, so um if you just walk through the proposed development with respect to. Okay, so if you just walk through the proposed development with respect to the solar panels and what we're proposing to put on this billboard. Could you just walk us through the solar panels that we're proposing to develop on the existing billboard? It's got to go, the green light's got to turn on.
Okay, we can pretty much hear you. You speak louder.
Yeah, just.
All right, let's speak louder. There's five solar panels. They're all red here. You can see. One, two, three, four, five, and they are basically only facing one side of the, the other side.
Are they on top or on the bottom?
No, they're not. We do have other exhibits that actually show. We not exactly how it's placed.
We have a rendering.
Oh, we have the billboard, the capboard, and then right underneath the lines that point towards the.
So they hang down.
They're hanging, they're hanging at thirty degrees down.
All right, I'm just interested in the visual impact.
We can put, if Mr. Chairman, if you'd like to see the rendering, we could put that up now.
Yeah.
All right, we'll work. Okay, so with respect to the solar panels, what's the goal, I guess, of putting the solar panels there? What, what exactly?
Goal for putting the solar panels there is simply to offset the lights. There's eight lights that are pointing toward the billboard. About two hundred watts each. And five panels are sufficient to compensate their usage of the lights.
And how exact, but can you just discuss the materials that are used and how the solar panels get mounted exactly?
So we have a structural engineer that has completely overseen the structure of the building, working on the solar modules. They will be pre-made and then mounted in place on the bottom frame of the elevators of the billboard. The billboard will have some reinforcement as we take this by the engine, three important ones on three of these frames. And then the solar module will build the work. Frank will be installed already.
Yeah, so as the board engineer and the planner requested the visuals, I think now's a good time. We just put the rendering up briefly and just take a look at it so people have a visual idea.
You can see the solar modules. They're like faces, so it's glass, glass, like facial. And then you have the structure that will be pre-made and then it will be just mounted underneath with reinforcements of, I didn't reinforce them to existing structure of the billboard. Right underneath the lights, these are the existing lights on the billboard. So this is the billboard and that's where the solar modules will be placed. About hitting the ground.
Were you storing all that power? Your battery packs?
No, basically the solar module will, will back heat.
So you're sending the power back on the grid?
Yeah, so it's, it's having to remove them that will send the power during the daytime back to the utility only to be used again anytime final lights.
So are there any more renderings you'd like to show? You want to show us any more renderings or?
In this one, one of the things that were requested, to see clearly how, you know, how it will look. All of that is not exactly real, but we got.
And it's not for our location. Not helpful. Continue.
So did you review the reports issued by the board engineer dated August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four by Alamo Group? Are there any issues with complying with the request made in that report?
No.
And with respect to the report issued by the board planner dated also dated August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, there any issues complying with those, those requests? So I don't have any further questions for this witness.
Is the applicant agreeing to all the requirements from the engineer and from the planner?
Yeah.
He's not an engineer. Sorry.
I'm sorry?
He's not an engineer. I need you to answer. Is the applicant complying with all the requests and the reports you receive from our engineer and our plan?
Yes, they've objected to nothing in terms of what the requests are.
No, you've objected to nothing. Are you agreeing to comply?
Yes, we'll comply.
Thank you.
No problem.
Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Sam.
I have a question.
Go ask boy.
So in my review, I'd mentioned that you know, it, the, the, the application's application states that the power will be provided to the diner, but you testified that the, that it will also help in lighting the billboard?
It must have been a mistake because it's only for the billboard lights. It is nothing to do with the light.
Okay.
No.
The application clearly states that is going to provide electricity for the principal use. The principal use is the diner. Are you withdrawing then?
But I was understanding the principal use is the billboard. I know there's, all we found through the Oprah was a resolution.
Rich, can you? You are not the owner of the property.
Billboards are treated as, as a separate use of principal use because it's not connected to the, although it's on the same property as Park West Diner, it's not, it's not customary incidental to the diner use. It's not an accessory structure, so it's its own principal structure.
Okay.
So I think, I think what they were saying was it's going to serve the principal structure, not meaning diner, but meaning billboard.
It makes a lot more sense. Thank you. Mike, you have our engineer. Do you have any questions?
Just a question, the application is for a conceptual site plan. Does that suffice or is, do they need also preliminary and final site plan?
They noticed, the notice doesn't say conception. The notice says you're here for a site plan. So, so.
The application.
Right. The application isn't accurate, but the notice covers it.
Okay. So. So all the requirements, I believe I referenced in my report for solar energy systems will, they would agree to.
Yes, you'll submit revised plans that address everything that the board engineer.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Is our planner satisfied?
Yes, because we did, I did write that the documents were not sufficient, so that's fine.
Very well. Any other questions of our professional members of the board?
Yeah, I have a question. Aside from what you have displayed there on the mockup with the solar panels and the structure that's holding them up, is there any other equipment that will be, be required in order to support those solar panels, such as transformers or, or anything?
No, no, I mean, the equipment itself, well, you know, the down wires, it's just like a disconnect for the part of the model.
They're basically static. They simply supply power from the panels to the billboard.
Yes, it's basically the panel will generate DC power. You will go down with micro变数, potentially DC power right up on the panel. And then it will go down with the same way that the lights are going down, even where the meters are, and you can see it right there. And it's easily powered on, and that's it.
Very well.
I'm sorry, I have another question.
Yes.
So in my letter on page five and six, I had asked about, you know, how, how the design of the solar energy system should blend in so it's not visible. Then I asked about the sightlines and visual. And I'm not, and then one other thing I'd also asked about the signage to secure because from what the information you provided, it wasn't clear. So I made an assumption that it was six feet, seven, six feet, seven inches high. So I was wondering if you're the person who'll be testifying or is an architect or a planner justifying this app?
And so you mean the?
It's more for the board, not me.
So the signage is a standard signage for solar that will be on this frame. And these are the labels that you will see. The, the distance that you mentioned, six feet from the ground is the minimum, is the maximum distance. So not to exceed. So that's where our design it will be, not to exceed the six feet. So it's a person over to the bridge or the design. And then this is existing already there, the meter and their main, it's mainly called it, the main, the main surface panel. So then you will be on the right side of it.
So how would it be secure that, you know, some, that nobody vandalizes it or something like that?
Right now, since it has a lock in there, it was, I don't know if you have, we have the pictures of the actual. The meter. We can provide a picture of the size. This was welded. This unit is shot welded into the hole, the forty-two inch hole. And then the meter is mounted there and as well as their connection box is mounted there. And you will just be mounted right on the right side of it. It's not seen like that already.
Is it easily accessible by people? Can the, a person not connected to this can easily approach it?
Right now, the person that's, the way, the way it is, the person can easily approach. Yes, he's definitely locked, has security locks in there. But it's there on habits.
You mentioned it was six feet, six feet up?
That's the maximum, but it's existing there. You can actually go there, but it's locked, locked in place. So you have to break the lock when.
We could provide pictures for the board if they'd like to see that. I don't know if we have them with us today. Could check my file, but, okay, okay.
Sam, what is your concern? Somebody tapping in?
My concern was vandalism, you know, typically like when we have, you know, like telecom, any kind of, there's always a fenced in area or something to secure it. So that's why I raised that question in the review letter. How is it secured? And is it, is there a way that, you know, nobody tampers with it or vandalizes it? That's all. Or even, even the safety concern too.
Yeah. Any other questions, the board?
Are these panels going to provide, cause a glare coming down the highway?
So the glare, there's like different white document papers that have been published about that. But the models are intended to absorb the light, like that. So Enrel now public documentation, it's about two percent of reflection of normal. So it's not like you're in solid mirrors. Um, they don't occur here at all. That's why you see some of these models even in the, here, here, as a ground house system. Because they have passed those requirements, you know, high levels.
Any further questions? Call your next witness, please.
Thank you. So our next file witness is a planner.
You swear affirm the testimony that you're about to give before this board is going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please tell us your name and spell your last name for the record.
First name, Thomas, last name, Ritchie, R I C C I, business address, it's ninety-two Park Ave, Rutherford, Jersey. I am a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, nationally certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners. I am a senior project manager at Stonefield Engineering Design. I have a bachelor's degree and a master's degree in city and regional planning, both from Rutgers University. I have been accepted as an expert witness in field of professional planning well over a hundred times throughout the state of Jersey. The first time it'll fall stuff like every other municipality.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Are all your licenses in effect?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. You're accepted.
So we just, just walk through, you know, your familiarity with the site and the proposed development?
Yeah, absolutely. So I'm sure this board is aware of where the site is located. It's in Route forty-six commercial corridor. More specifically, it's a billboard in lot of the Park West Diner. That's governed by the B two, so many district standards. You've heard the proposal today. It's simply to put five solar modules on the existing billboard. Now, the code permits solar installations as a conditional use, actually falls, falls zones throughout the town yet. And along as they are not a commercial solar facility. So the, the power that's harness has to be used or consumed as the zoning ordinance mentions back on site, which is exactly what we're doing today. Those solar panels are after sunlight and just power the solar panel itself. Now, the zoning ordinance separates the conditional use requirements for solar into residential and non- residential uses. And then in each of those two categories, they break it down. There's requirements for ground mounted and then there are different requirements for roof mounted. Now, we kind of fall into this unique category where we're not on the roof of the building, but it's technically not ground solar installation either. So that's the thrust of the D three trick. That's why we're here seeking the conditional use requirement. Because it's, it doesn't fit neatly into one of those two categories. Now, I'm sure the board is, is aware, the, the equipment standard that implied the conditions and experiences needs to be covered in squares, make sure. What that basically requires to do is show that the site can continue to accommodate this conditional use of solar panels despite not meeting that condition. And I think we can, particularly because even though we're not on a, we're not ground mounted and we're not roof mounted, we meet every other condition for buildings with regards to solar panels. Those are things like, as I mentioned, power must be conceived on site. We are, wherever it's mounted, it can impact existing building utilities, plumbing, can't extend it on a roof line. It's not applicable. It can, and I'll show you a bit, it will compare visibility of other signs in the area. If you don't, you don't. And it must, talks about landing it in the surrounding community or the surrounding environment as much as possible. The colors that of the storage of solar panel are going to match what's on the billboard. Pretty muted tones, really going to blend in with the bottom supports of that billboard. So I agree with all of these conditional use requirements, conditions. And as I mentioned, we, we need all of them with the exception that we're technically not approved, we're technically not granted. And I think the intent of that was really when they were creating the ordinance, probably adopted second, separate regulations. If we're going to have ground out facilities and then maybe we should do separate regulations for roof mounted. Probably wasn't contemplated that solar was going to get attached somewhere else, like billboard. I see it out on site around utility poles. You do have these unique circumstances, but any important thing, conditions that are regularly, regulating the impact of solar. You do need all of those requirements. So I prepared this exhibit. This is for the record, prepared by Stonefield Engineering Design. It is September fifth, two thousand twenty-four. It's a photo exhibit of the existing billboard from Route forty-six going in both directions. We like to do this when we have both solar applications and billboard applications to concede what it's going to look like. I think the important thing about, talk about signage impacts, this billboard is set ninety feet from the curb line. So it doesn't, it's not actually in that line of signs along for. So it doesn't, it's not actually in that line of signs along forty six set back into the site. So what you have is billboards, I think the module itself is about seventy feet, but its angle, it's going to seem even less of that. Basically going to go, uh, a small distance right under the existing billboard. As I mentioned, it couldn't set farther into the site. It doesn't obstruct this line of, um, site for the existing signs along forty six. But it's, it's important that, um, it doesn't block existing signs and not skate in the future that would go behind it. Um, because so far. Um. Yeah. So there's a lot of stuff, there's a lot of planning documents that point to the use of solar. Two thousand and one, uh, the SDRP, State Bill and Regovern Plan, um, actually mentioned goal of promoting solar, um, for the power. And then in two thousand and ten, which land is all actually, uh, added solar as an inherent beneficial use, which is there's a board is aware of, we consider an elevated status, use something that's preferred or generally favored by the units. Municipal Land is law did recognize, uh, importance of solar. Um, and actually in their list of goals, the list of seventeen purposes of that act. Um, purpose N is to promote utilization of renewable energy resources, which is exactly what solar does. Uh, so the state definitely has a preference for this. Uh, the master plan actually echoed in municipal land, adding solar as inherent beneficial use, the master plan re-split those state goals. Um, and then tying it up with town solar, they conditionally permit each, um, every zone in town. They try to accommodate both ground mounted and roof mounted. So the way I see it is there's, there's a strong reference from state level down to the local level for solar. Like I said, we kind of, we just want to go to deep categories of food versus ground, but I think the conditions, um, have been all other conditions that can met, uh, for not blocking existing or visible signs. I think that's why we granted, uh, this.
Just quickly, I want to make sure that we, I don't remember if we did this before, uh, that the renderings and the pictures were marked as exhibits.
Okay, we did, these were not marked.
Okay, so we was like, mark these as well.
That should be eight, two.
And I believe the renderings were separate from the site plan. I don't think they're part of fourteen.
I, I wasn't sure if they were part of it.
No, they're separate. Yeah. So those could be, I guess, eight, three.
Yeah, they should be marked.
Want to mark them individually? I think there's five sheets we can do, mark the whole thing in eight, three or?
Let's mark the whole thing eight, three, five, five sheets.
Five sheets of the rendering are.
Thank you. I, I have no further questions, uh, for Mr. Ricci.
Now, did you say you had smaller versions of the plans or, or you were talking about they were going to put up, you were going to put up the renderings?
Um, we, do we have copies of the?
Uh, oh, the, what was it with renderings?
Um. We, we can provide smaller versions, um.
Well, no, I just thought for the hearing tonight, but okay. They're all going to stay with the board anyway, so.
Okay.
Sam?
I have a question.
Our planner has a question for you.
Um, no, to the planner. So you mentioned it's inherently beneficial. I believe you will do a hundred percent positive trajectory. I can satisfy. However, the negative trajectory here, we have to do a C couple from balancing. You already, um, covered very thoroughly about the public benefit of it. But, um, in my review letter, I'd mentioned something about the visual impact, any kind of perceived or otherwise, uh, negative impacts and any, and what you could do to ameliorate any perceived, uh, impacts, uh, negative impacts. If, uh, if you'd like to, uh, provide some additional testimony regarding that.
Sure. Yeah. Uh, like I mentioned, uh, I think we would agree that the supports and solar panel structure itself would match the existing color of the billboard to potentially blend in with these bottom supports here. Um, this is a fourteen by forty eight size billboard. I think the solar panels are about seventy feet and they're going to be added. So it's really relatively small. Um, petition about its structure, if you want to pull it on top of this. Uh, it just, the fact that those in the lot, the music and sound, that you don't perceive a a very substantial thing or an impact on the settings, like again, the bottom design, um, certainly made against the problem.
Thank you.
Mike, do you have any, uh, questions?
Just one other question. You, these will be visible driving in a westbound direction, right?
Yes.
Yeah, the bottom of it. Like in the building. Not. Because the other side of the billboard essentially is blocked. Front of the east face of the center.
Okay.
And like you said, it's, they're seventy feet because they're inverted angled like this. It's not like they're seeing the full seventy feet. Really, the driver is really looking into it. They're almost seeing the thickness talking as opposed to the whole set of feet, but yeah.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any further questions or comments from the board members? May I have a motion? This is your last, uh, professional.
Uh, yes.
Um, may I have a motion to open up the meetings to the public?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Meeting is open up, is open to the public. Anyone wishing to address the board or ask questions of our applicants, please come forward. You're a very quiet audience. No one coming forward or close to me to the public.
Thank you. Uh, just briefly, uh, but again, thanks for your time and consideration tonight. Um, so we're just going to conclude with the leave, the testimony presented today. Uh, supports the application meets all the criteria for the D three variants. Um, and we expect the request that the application be approved. Uh, thanks.
So counsel, you heard our discussion earlier with the board engineer. So although the application said conception site cleared, you're applying for preliminary and final site plan improvement for this, correct?
Uh, yes.
Okay. So I, I assume you're requesting the informally amend the application for that, and you notice does provide.
Yes.
So the word conceptual no longer applies?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. I like to be brief.
So it's preliminary and final site plan in a D three variance because the solar panels are not, are not, they're not ground mounted and they're not roof mounted, but rather they're.
All right. So the D three variance is the only variance?
Correct. Yes, that's correct.
That's the only one.
Very well. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Um, may I have a motion? Been here before.
I'll make a motion to approve the application for the, uh, site plan and the D three variant.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Please poll the board.
Mr. Karash?
Yes.
Ms. Cattaldo?
Yes.
Mr. Seber?
Yes.
Dr. Abdi?
Yes.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Mr. Rema?
Yes.
Mr. Kilpatrick?
Chair votes yes, the application is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
I'm going to take a clear, uh, five minute recess. You seem to be here by yourself. Would you? Thank you. Our next applicant is Coric LLC for one ninety eight Newark, Compton, California.
Good evening, Chairman. Members of the board entering my appearance, I'm.
Good evening Chairman, members of the board entering my appearance on behalf of Coric LLC, the owner of 198 Newark Pompson Turnpike, John Vettery, three University Plaza, Suite 207 Hackensack, New Jersey. I feel like we've done quite a bit of these where it's deja vu all over again, but we were here back on February 6, 2020, when we said, oh, there might be a little thing called COVID that's only supposed to be two weeks. So it's not going to be an issue. We'll see everyone back live in March or in April. And I think we actually were here live. It was the last meeting of this board, March 5th, 2020, where the resolution for this building was memorialized. So, you know, what we, what we have this evening is a, as I've said on the last application, I think it's a continuation of, you know, the significant improvements that are being seen Newark Pompson Turnpike. I think it echoes a lot of what I heard and read. I'm only at page 60, I think, on your master plan. But, but I did see some recommendations that would support an application like what we have coming forward at 194, for, you know, for reasonable mixed use within that area and an acknowledgement that the current zoning in V1, having offices on the second floor are difficult at best. So, but the application this evening is an amended site plan and a request for an affirmation of the former approvals, as well as an extension to the extent the board thinks that we need an extension of those approvals. Work has commenced at the site. The home that was there was demolished. There's been some site work already done on this site. However, the applicant, Mr. Shladoska, who is here this evening and his partner, had the opportunity to buy the two-family house to the north at 194. Does look like a single family, but it is in fact, I looked it up on the tax records, it is a legal two-family home. So that's a separate application. And I'm going to speak to what we're doing here this evening. And we have our engineer, who was the engineer on this initially back in 2020, David Fantina. Essentially, it's, if you recall, the 198 application, and we have the old plans and we have the new plans. It was a horseshoe around the building. It's a hundred-foot lot. We had 12 feet on one side, 12 feet on the other, and it made a loop. I think the in was on the right and the out was on the left. And it works, and it's what we see at 178, the building that is also owned by the applicant. And it does work, but it's not ideal. It's ideal to have 24 feet, as Mr. Coppola has wanted us to have on 82, 84, and many others. And so by combining that, the two, we have now one 24-foot curb cut, as opposed to having four individual curb cuts going up and down Route 23, which I think everyone will acknowledge is problematic. So that's an overview of what we're asking on the amended site plan. We're not seeking any other changes. The building stays exactly the same. Everything else stays exactly the same. I think the planner did call out another variance, either, either we missed it or it was never called out. It was, we're not changing anything, but I think it was the proximity of the parking to the back. The five feet, so maybe it never made its way into the resolution from 2020. Other than that, everything is staying the same. So with that said, I'd like to call my first and only witness on this application, David Fantino is going to testify in the area of civil engineering. Dave?
Good evening. The Fantino, you swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give before the sport is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Obviously, we know you are, but just tell your name and say your last name for the record.
David Fantina at Peasant Frank, A N T I N A, business address 15 Sunset Drive, Furnessville, New Jersey.
And I am a licensed professional engineer, appeared before the board many, many times.
License is so good?
Yes.
Accepted. Welcome, Dave. How you been?
Thank you very much.
As Mr. Vettery said.
That's fine. You're good.
So, Mr. Vettery said, probably at 194, this still will improve. And he says, absolutely, we're essentially sliding 50 to the north. So that I mean, that room, when we come in for, certainly to the fourth one, instead of going on 194, that's going to be a twenty-four foot, in and out, combined, as my way to the super. The work will be tall that there was previously a twelve-foot line of tenants. And that can now be reached around, that's all five things. There was all parking areas improved, still all parking space, actually no change, the building. What, whatever, what was saying to me. The bits, around the 50 off and here's the bottom one. We, I thought that there is, and granted, the property, not only, definitely there is, that should have been granted, or changed in question. I have been trying, trying, not changing the plans, but my housekeeping is taking me to use their front end. Really no option.
Okay, Dave, we're, we're going to address some enhancements and improvements to drainage, but if it pleases the board, we'd like to do that as part of the 194.
That's fine.
Application. Thank you, Chairman. I have no further questions, Mr. Fantino.
Any questions as the board members for Mr. Fantino? Planner or engineer?
Does the, does the change in the curb cuts affect any accessibility by emergency service vehicles to access the site?
Okay, remember, now, a large vehicle, it has been going the second way, it's twenty-one.
I was never like that 12-foot line. So I like the 20-foot. Are there any further questions aboard?
So, Mr. Vettery. Obviously, you're going to come back for 194. So by placing the driveway in the location that you're showing tonight, are you going to provide a cross easements?
We are. Yep. We have a draft easement, even though it's the same, same ownership. So it's distinct from 82, 84, 86 Newark Pompson. But people sell properties and it's just good housekeeping to do that. So yes, we will do it.
And so that would be a condition, if the board were to approve this, that'll be a condition of approval that you provide that cross easement. And then in addition to that, this, if we were to grant that, it's going to be subject to naturally a subsequent approval.
Yes, would have to be subject to the board seeing fit to approve 194, because they are linked together.
Mr. Dingle, in my review later, I had mentioned about providing a vinyl fence along the entire rear yard. Would that also, do you think we should include that as well? Because that's part of 194.
You're talking about fencing for 198?
Yes.
Was that part of the original, Sean?
I, I, if it's not.
Can't imagine, but he's likely not.
Always anticipated that there'll be brand-new fencing there, so that's fine.
Well, no, no, we're talking about plantings.
Plantings, yes.
The plantings are provided. We just, we just recommended having fencing. And obviously, the trash enclosure is part of 194.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yes, we're going to speak about that. I, I think there's a recommendation to move the trash in. Currently, where the trash is put is for 194. It's like right in the middle, and it's the first thing you see. So we're going, it's one of the things that we're going to, we'll talk about that in the.
It's a much better, but one of the buildings, I don't know if it was 91, 98, or 194, doesn't have windows on the sides of the building? Is that true?
That was 194, the proposed building.
You're going to re-propose?
Yeah, yeah. If it's okay, I'd like to maybe spend five minutes speaking about 194 as a little preamble for October.
Okay, let's finish up 198.
Let's wrap up 198.
Let's wrap up one. What do we require for 198?
So 198 is amended, amended preliminary and final site plan. And the variance for this setback for the parking, parking.
Correct.
Approaches within the five-foot setback.
And we have requested that the board, since we're here tonight, affirm and extend the approvals as per the resolution from March.
Well, if we reaffirm all the variances that were granted, in effect, this is.
Yes, sure.
Have you complied with all the requests that we asked of you?
Believe we have.
Planner, engineer? We're not sure. We'll review that.
Don't know at this point.
Okay.
Just one other point.
It's just since they're asking for us to affirm, I would like them to affirm.
We affirm.
The stormwater management system for the proposed shared property project, it is going to be a shared detention. It's going to serve both sites, just as far as maintenance. If in the future, if there is a subdivision where the properties are separated, that may be needed to be worked out.
That, yeah, I think that will be part of the, part of the easier.
Okay, I am required to open up the meeting as a public. May I have a motion to open up the meeting to public?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Meeting is opened up to the public. Anyone wishing to come forward and just come on up? This is only regarding 198.
Yes. I do have questions about both of them. Can you name first?
198 only.
Only 198?
Yes, okay. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give before the sport is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please tell us your name, say your last name, and give us your address.
Julie, J U L I, J U L I E, Julie Davis, D A B I S.
And your address?
23 Strickland Avenue. I live diagonally behind 198, exactly behind 194. Okay. Okay, so my main concerns are the height of the buildings. Apparently, they are the owners of 178 as well, and that building has been going on for well over two years. How long is it going to take to build these properties? Is it one building? Is it two buildings? I'm a little confused tonight by that.
Mr. Vettery?
Yeah, so their, their proposal is two buildings.
Okay.
She's asking about what the anticipated construction will be, because it's taking a long time for the other one. 178.
178.
Very solid materials that went into 178, we are, that took very long to write. So it's nearing completion, but the expectation would be that 194, 198 would be built at the same time. And we will likely commence shortly after the promotion of our C.
Okay, building has also been going on seven days a week. They were working on Labor Day.
I'm sorry, I had.
Building has been going on seven days a week. They work on, they were working on Labor Day inside the property. I don't know if that's allowed.
Not, not our department.
Okay. I'm worried, honestly, about drainage. My backyard has been flooding for the past.
Are you, does 198 should?
Impact me?
John, you want to respond to?
Our site engineers here from speaking that, first evening, there were two multifamilies that were there.
Yes.
Many, many years. One of them is still there. You know, we've looked at the property, we've tested it on the property, just to see there are, there's currently no stormwater management there right now. Everything drains out, and it doesn't go anywhere. We're obligated both by this board and by the state regulations, stormwater management regulations, which have, you know, been greatly enforced, greatly enhanced now. And because this is, one of these lots would not be on major development. Or major development, I think they'd be defined as quarter acre more. So each of these individually are under that requirement. We think it's more conservative approach and said, let's look at this together. Together, it's about a 22,000 square foot together. It is more of a coordinator, and we thought that it would be more conservative. So that, I'm not going to say that this will improve your situation, but our engineer is here to say that there are currently a very small water management, ready, nothing. There's no dry walls. Everything just drains out. So perhaps it's a help, but it's certainly, David, we're not all for that. There's also been like the add, but probably way this is designed, it can even run down the floor as well. Brains for the backyard, but even the curb that will be played is publicly with the property. And that's not the wolf, the wolf is actually in the middle of this part of the way. To be no condition, any situation, but with the, the pump roof keeping this part of the lot, there's a jump to the front of the lot. You can really, it's all, they have very, very large underground fences. And then if that way that over people would flow, it goes down some street, sort of, there is, if there are, so again, there's a whole.
Like a French drain?
No, because that's, okay, parking lot, it's all on the curb.
Um, may I have a question, just to maybe further clarify what Julie Davis is asking? Once it is gathered and captured in that, in that waste and in the stormwater management system, how does it release it out into?
We've got small, I think, that comes out. Now, now that runs out, it would be something, in we are, when you do sit, we couldn't shrink, privately, we're going to change that, except to be, the by, or discussing that, you have a focal meeting, but essentially it will get overflowed. Somewhere in this fighting system, that borders ones, this building up, they go out.
The opposite direction of the property.
My neighbors and I are also concerned about trash pickup. Where will the dumpsters be located? You said they were being moved. Will trucks be pulling into the back of the property to pick up? The dump, you know, they.
There's a dumpster, can you not be sure where the dumpster is on the site plan? Well, the dumpster, we have to propose, that should, it's probably, there was, on some, some special, that's not a good spot for it. We pulled them, just to see if the dumpster, that would sense. Coming on a great, you're going to, or, 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 wherever this, some will have. We're, we're going to further, then it was a recommendation of the engineer, perhaps the planner, that we'd close it, it's not attractive, so it's not happening. That there will be a professional service there.
I'm also concerned about rodents, because we have been getting them from the 7-Eleven that's at the corner since the property was sold. I don't think that the upkeep there is as good as it was. So that's, yeah. So we've seen rodents. Yeah. I'm also concerned about the noise level from the various residents and business people that would be coming. Will there be core hours for the businesses? How many?
There, there was, this board put a mandate on the prior application that we get, two things. One, that the businesses, to the extent they have vehicles that are associated with their business, they will not be permitted to be parked overnight. Number two, that the business, the initial plan, since they, they just have no, it's powered the restriction. So if they put a restriction on it, and I would presume that that restriction will come on to a government, for a case, that the business is voted by.
And obviously, we don't know what types of business will be there yet, obviously.
It has to be, it's something compliant with what the job allows, otherwise, that particular tenant would have to come before this board and make their case that it was something outside of that. What we imagine is what's happening now, to service-related, service-related industry, where we have a Pilates studio that's interested, or something like that.
No more pizza rays?
I don't know. I'm going to bring it, I feel, the audio must be.
Okay. I'm also concerned about lighting at the back of the property.
Yes, lighting, they are all about it, but actually, the kind of year, the president of the town engineer, will require that there be no unskilled. Off, and that's only with constable. We have to prove that part of our site, that we're not lighting in progress.
If I can just add for a moment, all these questions were answered in the public meeting 2000? You know, they, they've all been addressed. Your concern is primarily with 194.
Correct.
And that application will take place October 3rd.
Okay.
So you'll have your opportunity.
Okay.
But the questions you're asking, so they've already been covered.
I apologize.
Oh, no, no.
Repetitive, but it wasn't available back in 2020. But now that this is being, the property was bought directly behind my house. It is much more of a concern to me now.
Of course.
So.
It's your, yes, your backyard.
Exactly.
Weekend. We're trying to make it as nice as we can. You can just ask, John.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Anyone else want to come forward? Come on.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give before the sport is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please tell us your name, say your last name, and give us your address.
Janina Palach, P A L A C H, 191 Newark Pompson Turnpike, in Littleville. Okay, so my concern is also drainage and the driveway, because I'm across the street, and I think it's going to be too much chaos going on there with the cars coming in and out.
And I think it's going to be too much chaos going on there with the cars coming in and out and the traffic on twenty-three.
You're across the street from one ninety-four, one ninety-eight?
Yeah.
So you're on the southbound side of Compton, turnpike?
Yes.
Okay. You're not heading towards Willowbrook, you're heading away?
Yes. So my concern is with the cars coming in and out, trucks, whatever. Um.
That's an important concern. John, you want to address that or Dave?
Also, you take that by, uh, one of the comments I made earlier, by having one curb cut. As opposed to the word that that's a huge, so instead of having this, uh, horseshoe that, as we learned, the chairman of this life. Instead of having a horseshoe in and out and then another horseshoe in and out with the opportunity for activity to be happening. At all of those four points at any given time, by having one conforming twenty-four foot. Per cut that that's enhanced. Better than what previously approved, which was, like I said, we've been going on the code. And that's also subject to the approval of the J P O. And, and I'll also just, maybe I can, I'll say, we had this conversation, but, um. It came during the, in the mind, basically, we're going to be pressing the parking, but, um, yeah, it has, I mean. It needs me, uh, that's a.
Dave, you're stealing my fun, I didn't tell that.
But, but that, uh, we're going to.
Any shows you haven't seen on Netflix, just maybe, like, at the end, if you're, you're interested, just. He's not going to tell you what that.
Part, so that, um, there's, there's nothing to go. Perhaps, above and beyond, of the, the, we.
I don't agree with that.
We're going from twelve feet to twenty-four feet.
I understand that.
Safer.
Okay, but the traffic coming this way and this way and cars coming out of both places, it's gonna, it's impossible. You go there around three o'clock, four o'clock. People drive like nuts.
Uh, so, you know, you live there, you know the property, I think your house was built probably about the same time as a franchise. Well, one, one ninety-four, it's a two family, and I know because we had annual eviction for, uh, tenants that were previously there that had. Multiple trucks and parts that they all backed on, they were, they're in a workable term. It was built at a very different time when it was Compton Avenue and it was just a small country road, but they were. Grand modeled in, and so currently, there's no term. They back on the Route twenty-six, a terrible condition. This is reminiscent. Of the previously, you know, multiple cars, four units that were there. This is four units that were previously approved, like one ninety-eight, and the post-four units would be.
And you're going to put in that stipulation where they can only make a left-hand turn instead of right there?
For the DOT, DOT, all this, you know, what can, can happen with regard to the entrance.
When are you going to know that?
Not sure.
So how does this work? It gets approved and then DOT?
Subject to approvals of the other parties at that first station. DOT, uh, candidate, in this case, not from the road, so counting the, uh, waitress and stuff.
And how long is it going to take for this place to be built? Because there's so much mess going on with Kenny's building next door. The mess, people complaining, they pass me up because of all the, the black, the fencing that's around here.
So, so, yeah, so it will be compliant, that this is a much different animal, four units, that's, I think, fifty and twenty of the seven, the total that there are. And that's, I don't change, this is a very different, it has a major application.
I know, but it, it's affecting me.
I am, yeah.
It's a mess. They closed down the road. They don't tell us anything. So. They have a building started now that's not finished, and now they're going to start another building when, and how long is it going to take?
One seventy-eight can be done before the end of the year, and one ninety-eight, one ninety-four, they're meant at the same time, they expire, I think, less than one year.
All right, thank you.
Any other members of the public? Wish to come forward? No one coming forward, I close the meetings to the public with summarization?
So, um, as our engineer has testified to this evening, we think that this is, um, uh, an optimal plan. For circulation. We think that there's lots of benefits, um, to having just one curb cut. Not creating any new variances. We're not changing anything else having to do with the building. And, um, as we'll see in, uh, in October, you know, we have, uh, some improvements and enhancements that are planned. Together with both buildings, you know, from a, um, access standpoint, from a drainage standpoint. And, um, I hope that we've answered all of your questions and that you seek that to approve the amended site plan application for one ninety-eight.
One last round of questions. Any questions for the board? Any question from our professionals?
No.
One, uh. There are a set of architectural plans, um, you can path with that building.
For one ninety-eight, yes. Yep, they're the same as one seventy-eight, but we'll, yes, we'll send. Thank you.
May I have a motion?
I'd like some assistance from the, from the, the attorney. So. Is that a little? It, it's amended, amended preliminary site plan approval, final site plan approval. Reaffirm the variances granted as part of the two thousand twenty approval. And grant a new variance for the setback. Parking stalls, uh, approaching to the setback. Five foot setback they approach into that. I would say that all terms and conditions that the board previously inserted into the nineteen ninety. The, the two thousand twenty approval for one ninety-eight remain in effect unless, unless they're modified as a result of what we're going here.
So we're going to be accepting any, the previously accepted, um, uh, from the two thousand twenty meeting. In addition to that, we're doing the modified setback.
Yes.
And we are approving the dry, uh, the widened driveway.
Yes. And there'll be a requirement for cross easements.
And.
And that'll be, obviously, what we're doing here is also going to be, right, it's going to be contingent on naturally. When a second application being approved.
Right. I'm going to give a shout.
You could just say, that's the motion.
Why don't we wait for one ninety-four? Uh, um, a- a- as the township attorney has, has stated, um, I'd like to make a motion to approve the application. As stated by the township attorney.
That's good. Uh, may I have a second?
Second.
Please poll the board.
Mr. Karas?
Yes.
Ms. Cataldo?
Yes.
Mr. Seber?
Yes.
Dr. Abdi?
Yes.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Mr. Rema?
Yes.
Mr. Kilpatrick?
Chair votes yes, the application is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Want to roll right into your, uh.
Yeah, I will, I will roll right into, I want to get the file, I'll roll right into one ninety-four, so. Hey, everyone, one ninety-four Newark, Compton, Turnpike. So we have, we have a brick house that was built in the, uh, I don't know, probably late forties, I would say. Uh, that does really look like a single family, and I know that was referenced in some of the professional, but I, I did speak to the, uh, tax assessor about it. It is actually illegal to family. Um, I don't know how long it has been that way, presumably its whole life. Um, and the, the proposal is to, uh, tear the building down. And to improve the site with this, um, new driveway that the board just partially approved. And, uh, you know, there's lots of enhancements by doing that. Um. One of the things that we saw that was a recurring comment in the letters is, what, what can this applicant do? To try to mitigate the park, because there's not, there's not a lot of, there is off-street parking in the neighborhoods, but we try to avoid that. And frankly, the only way to do that would be to reduce the density for, to reduce the size of the retail stores. And there were some benefits from, uh, reducing that. So even though Dave stole my thunder, I'm here to announce that, uh. The applicant is going to revise the plans for one ninety-four, the architectural plans. So that it is four units, uh, similar to one seventy-eight, similar to one ninety-eight. Um, may keep the footprint of the building the same and just have more luxurious, larger units there. Um, we have, uh, changed architects. You'll remember, uh, Adam Lasota, who was here for a very short period of time. Who is the architect on eighty-two, eighty-four, great architect, and we're happy to see what he comes up with, that we will then present to the board. Um, to the board office ten days before the October third meeting. So essentially, that's, um, that's what we're planning, the retail stores on the bottom. I think it's in keeping with what the master plan is saying for this district. We've been through this on many applications on Compton. Uh, it still is a B-one zone, still requires us to, uh, come in for a, uh, D-one use variance. Um, one of the other, um. Benefits potentially from the applicant's standpoint at least is that by reducing it down from six, even five. Um, there would be no inclusionary affordable housing unit that would be required. So if you, if there's four or under, no inclusionary unit, if it's five or more, so. Even if I think our parking would be greatly enhanced if we lost one unit, that one unit would wind up being an affordable housing unit. Um, so the decision was made by the applicant, come back with a plan for four units and, um. Like I said, we'll work on those plans quickly and try to integrate some of the other comments that we had from an engineering standpoint that Dave mentioned. Going to make some further enhancements to the drainage as well. So that's what we have coming in October.
Thank you very much, Mr. Betterie. You have an announcement that there won't be a notice?
Yes. Thank you. So ready members of the public? The application for one ninety-four Newark, Compton, Turnpike is going to be carried to the board's October third meeting. At seven o'clock, right here in the municipal building. So if anybody's interested, you should return at that time. There'll be no further notice required by the applicant.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Betterie.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Any old business? Any new business? May I have a motion for adjournment?
Quick motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.